Council Agenda: Township Parsippany Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of February 18th, 2025. Introduction posting of notice, adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Minister Building on December 2nd, 2024, which remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star Ledger on December 6th, 2024. Can I ask everybody to please stand for the flag. Role call, Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also attended are Mayor James Barberio, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, Municipal Clerk Collette Madden, Council President. We have a call, may I begin?
Yes, please.
Upcoming meetings, March 4th, 2025, at 7:00 P.M., which is the agenda meeting; March 18th, at 2025, at 7:00 P.M., which is the regular meeting. We're going to go into executive session for a few minutes. Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas a township council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas a township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, potential litigation, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes will be made public, now therefore be resolved by township council or Township Parsippany Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Role call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to temporarily adjourn to closed session, we should be back out in a few minutes, thank you.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Role call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, we're back into open session, moving along to the public session at this time. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Role call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is now open to the public, you have five minutes to speak on any matter, just please state your name before you speak.
My name is Fred Preston, I'm the president of the library board, so I'm speaking on behalf of the library board. So, we have recently completed a strategic plan, anybody would like to look at this in a year. Yeah, we just finished doing a strategic plan, outlining what we'd like to do in the next few years, and if you want one, we have some extras here. But in particular, we're interested in the plans for the facilities of the libraries, the three branches. But in particular, right now, I'd like to talk about the Lake Hiawatha facility. Now, this Lake Hiawatha facility is built over 60 years ago, and it's deteriorating, and I think some of you toured it, you know that, and I don't know how much longer it's going to last. We keep putting things into it, maintaining it, for example, last year, we just put in 50,000, excuse me, the town paid for the $50,000 for a new roof. The air conditioning is shot, and it's not going to be usable in the summer, so we're just trying to keep the thing open. But I don't know, at some point, because of the deteriorating situation there, it could be like just pouring money uneconomically into a building that needs to be rehabbed or even replaced. So, five years ago, 2020, we made a grant, and the grant was accepted from the state for $3 million, and the town matched that, at $6 million, but unfortunately, that's not enough to replace the entire building. And that was one of the stipulations of the grant, that we replace it. So, unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be able to do it that way. So, there's other options, and some of them, you folks have discussed with me, for one is a new building over on the Knoll Road. Now, the problem with that is, that is on green acres property, and the green acres restrictions, we cannot build a new library there. Another possibility is to lease a facility, an empty place in the neighborhood. Now, we'd have to, of course, spend money to rehab that, you know, make it a library, but leasing a building is still a viable option. A third option that we have is to just rehab the whole building. Now, we have the 3 million, that the matching money that the town has said we could use for the grant, which I don't think we're going to be able to get the grant, but the $3 million matching fund, and I also understand that there's, back in 2015, some money was put for rehab of the whole system, and I think of that, at least a million is left. We've spent some already on the other buildings, but a million is left that we could use to rehab, so if we take that, and the 3 million, that would be a very good fund that we could use to rehab the building as it stands. Now, of course, that means that we'd be out of commission until, while that process is going on, but at this point, I think that that's, those are the three options. Now, the library board cannot do any of those things on her own, so here I am asking you folks to help us out.
Very second, sir.
To, we have those options in front of us, if you could help us out, that's my point here, that's what I want to agree. So, we need a new library, that's the important thing.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please take one and pass it down like in grade school. It's not a ditto sheet, so it's not going to smell good. I'm Kim Anderson, I've been before you many times before. This is about the water line to our house. We have been in discussions with the water department for about four years now, about a solution, and back in November, the mayor and the engineering department, the water department, had a meeting in Mount Tabor for the residents to ask questions about the process and how Phase 1 was going. I think everybody learned that the contractor they hired was, to put it mildly, incompetent and unprofessional, I don't think anyone can argue with that. And that, for that reason, and that reason only, we declined to have them do the work on our house. We also raised the point that we were placed in Phase 1 of the project based on an erroneous conclusion by the water department, which they have since stated, yes, we know this is incorrect. That erroneous conclusion was that we had a leak in the water line, so they wanted to put us in Phase 1. There's no leak in the water line, we would love to replace the line, we did not opt out of using a town contractor, we just want to be placed in another phase. I don't see why that can't be done, and after the meeting, I was told there would be better communication, that was one of the issues brought up at the Mount Tabor meeting. So, I emailed, and at the meeting, I was told multiple times by the mayor, the water department guy, we can take this, let's take this offline, email me, we'll set up a meeting. I did that, and I didn't hear anything back until last Friday, when I received a letter from Mr. Lavery, essentially stating that fines and penalties could be imposed on us, that they're not trying to penalize residents. I think everything that's happened so far, you know, I wouldn't be out of line saying this is kind of punitive. I'm sure that's not the intent, but that's how it feels. He noted that we are marketing our house for sale, I don't know where that information came from, but essentially saying, if you don't replace the water line at your own expense, we will not give you a CO, we won't allow you to sell your house. At the end of the letter, he states that they don't want to bring an enforcement action. I think as a first response, after the meeting in November, this is the first communication I have had from the town, and it was a little upsetting. All we want is to be placed in a different phase of this project that extends, I think the project has to be completed in 2031?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. Mayor Barberio, 2031, does that sound about right?
I think we have 10 years, when you're done, then I'll answer the questions.
Okay. In any event, this is a multi-year project, so it's not like it's ending in six months and we need to get this done now. This is a project that's going in different phases over multiple years. Why we can't be placed in a phase later down the road is beyond me, I don't think I'm asking for too much. And the sole reason we said no to Regal is because of their proven unprofessional and incompetent conduct. They didn't bury water lines deep enough at some of the other properties, they didn't bury them below the frost line, so they had to come and insulate them, I guess that's sufficient, I don't know, time will tell. They have been rude to numerous people, including myself, they cursed me out, they've been rude to sewer department employees who, on at least two occasions that I know of, had to show up because Regal contracting punctured a sewage line. So, all I'm asking, put us in another phase, we will gladly use whoever the town hires in another phase. That's all, thank you.
So, no, no, once you're done, then we answer, whatever. So, we have 10 years to get this done, this is mandated by the state of New Jersey, this is not something that the town came up with, we're required to do that.
I understand that, and I'm also.
No, no, I'm not telling you this, I'm not telling you this, I just want the council to know that, in case they forgot, we've discussed this before. The contractor, you know, this is part of the low bidding process that we go through in the state of New Jersey, so there's no question that there are problems with the contractor, so that is something we agree on. The purpose of my letter was just to say what the law requires, which was, you, once you get notice, you have 90 days to replace the line. Mrs. Anderson's right, originally, they agreed to opt in, there were problems with the contractor, and then their property was scheduled for Saturday, August 17th, so that was some six months ago, and then, I don't know what happened, because I just have the memo from the water department, but they showed up, there was a dispute, and then the contractor said he wasn't going to do the work and walked away. So, that was six months ago. So, the, obviously, the line hasn't been replaced, they're done with the first 34, these are done by neighborhoods, so there is an issue in pushing this to another phase, because it's going to have to be, and again, I'm not going to get into a debate with you, it's just the water department, I think Mr. Andres can better speak to this, but, you know, once you move to another neighborhood, he was telling me that, look, they put a new line in here, there's additional costs that are going to be required if you start excluding people from various phases, but I would rather he explain what those are than me, I could just tell you what the conversation I had with him.
I would have been happy to.
Wait, ma'am, we can't have back and forth. I'm just explaining now to the council, so.
When they came to your house to do this, I remember this, I think was, you didn't know, but you, we already knew that this contractor had questionable, okay, that's, I just wanted to remember.
Nope, yeah, we knew that they had, in fact, they showed up unannounced and rigged up my back door without even knocking on the door, and later they showed up.
Okay, thank you.
And stormed off.
Thank you.
Just keep us posted if you hear from Mr. Andres.
Good evening, Mohammed Sayam, does this work?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Mohammed Sayam, I don't know, I know many of you, but if you don't know me, I used to work for the town for about 11 years, I lived in the town over 30 years, and I've, I own two properties on North Beverick Road and Lake Hiawatha, so I'm still actively involved with Parsippany, I will always consider it my home. One of the properties I own is a vacant lot, it's 63 North Beverick Road, if you're not familiar with that, it's the lot that is adjacent to Chief Hiawatha Park, right now it's just a empty lot, I demolished the building on it. I had plans to build a restaurant there that was approved through the planning board, those plans didn't really work out over the years, there's a fire exit issue, so I kind of held off on pursuing development of that property, so it's been sitting vacant for many years. So, I had a couple of meetings with the mayor, business administrator, township clerk, they're trying to help me out with the property, that, it didn't really work out because there was some restrictions, they really made a good effort for that. The last time we met, I was on the Morris County Open Space Committee for four years, and I kind of learned a lot there, where the county wants to buy up open space and preserve it, so it was a great project, it's still existing, there's much less properties that are able to be preserved, because a lot of them are preserved and there's not much property left. But, they do, obviously, the town's done it before, they purchase properties, they preserve them forever, which Chief Hiawatha Park is preserved. So, I came up with the idea, you know, from that experience, and I presented to the mayor, hey, does the town want to apply for open space for this land, so you could expand Chief Hiawatha Park, it's right next door, it's the center of town, it's a nice pocket park, I thought it was a great idea. The mayor, you know, said it was an idea he was, you know, he would like, and they actually ordered appraisal, and that's the last I heard. So, the only reason I'm here is, I've tried to contact the business administrator many times, I've tried to talk to the mayor many times, I know they're super busy, they've been great with me, so this is not, but I just wanted to present it to the rest of, to the council, also sorry for calling you 100 times too, because I know that was part of it, but I thought it was a great idea, and it just kind of hit a dead end, and I was wondering if I could get some help. I also contacted Jen at zoning, because on the town's website, it says she's on the committee for open space for the town, but she told me that committee's sort of inactive, so I did exhaust a lot of options before I wanted to present it to you, but I just would like to see if that's something that the town is, could get back into gear, and I don't mean, I know.
Mom, you're okay, no, don't worry.
But I just, it kind of hit a dead end.
It's okay, I know, we've spoke many times with regards to this, you done speaking?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right, with regards to it, but we have, the business administrator and I have met on other properties for open space as well here in the township, and I'd be more than willing to see if we can get this on our RSE, I'll have an open space committee meeting, but there will be other projects as well that we'll look into, purchase the town for open space trust fund, and then we will contact the open space committee and the county, because if we want county money, the same thing, we would need to go to them as well. I don't, I mean, if you want to give it to us for 200,000, then this will be work out pretty good. No, but Mohammed, I will definitely look at it, I would like to have it for several reasons.
I know, I appreciate it.
No, and the reason why.
I want to comment on the county though, just because I was there four years. They have very few applications coming in, in most of the years, and they are still well-funded, they say yes to most of the applications they get, unless it's something.
I got to tell you, the county has never said yes to me when I went to meet with them on several occasions, but that's okay, my point is, I would like to see for several reasons. One is, we have the Hiawatha Park over there, we just redid, we're redoing the whole landscape, streetscape over in Lake Hiawatha, and this would be the time to actually do it, if we were going to do it. So, I will follow up with you, Mohammed.
Thank you.
And it would help us too, I can only speak for myself, but I wouldn't make any commitment to what is the best use of your land without knowing all the facts and figures, is it possible you can email the township clerk your proposal, and then he can distribute it to the council?
That's an administrative function, actually, you would submit it.
He was present at one of the.
And we just discussed this, so that's what it would be.
Yeah, I'd just love to continue the discussion.
In fact, there's several options we can do with it, but once we get it, and once we meet, and go to the open space committee, and then we go back to the township council with the recommendation.
Great, thanks for your time.
I'm Snigdal Mitra, I've been here in the last meeting too, I think you all remember, I hope you remember my issue, it's with the giving us security and privacy. I'm here to get an update, because I haven't heard, and we haven't, the neighborhood, haven't heard anything since we last been here.
Council President, I can.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, the property is in Denville, this council does not have any control over the fence, so I want to make sure that we put that out there and acknowledge that first, because that's really the most important factor. We've reached out to the mayor there, I reached out to the business administrator there last Thursday, I met with them on some other things, and this subject came up. He is going to continue trying to get something to happen there, he's having problems getting the company to call him back about this, because from their point of view, the neighbors have upset the developer. Now, I know you're upset by the developer, but from their point of view, the neighbors have upset the developer on this stuff. So, I think this is one of those situations where we're just going to have to keep on trying and keep on trying to work on it, because again, it was approved in Denville, it was approved four years ago before this administration took over in another town, and there's great difficulties in making them do something that is not what they want to do.
So, two questions, one is, why is it a given that we have done something to upset somebody?
It's not.
Why is that even something that?
I'm just telling you what was told to me.
I understand, so basically.
I make no judgment on who's right, who's wrong, on my place.
So, the question is, that we requested Parsippany, as taxpayers of Parsippany, for Parsippany to give us security and privacy, and you heard a neighbor the other day, they chopped some trees they've left behind on their property, it fell on his, and broke his fence and his swimming pool, there's another tree that with these winds now that I'm seeing is swinging like crazy, it's going to fall any minute. Yes, all of that is so-called their problem, but it is also ours, and being that it's ours, and we consider Parsippany to be our protectors, and our, you know, since we're paying our tax dollars to you, so to give us something that is going to make our properties habitable, and what's something, I mean, right now, with the way it is, the little that they have done, because they are taking the approach that we don't need to care about Parsippany residents, Parsippany is saying they need to care about us and do something about it. That's clearly at loggerheads, and there will never be anything done, because each party is pointing the other way. So, as Parsippany residents, we are asking that you take it for us, you know, take ownership of our situation, and build something on our side, not do anything on theirs.
Okay, so I'm going to just respond.
Is that your only questions? Are you done?
Okay, and I'm going to be candid, be very upfront, and sometimes people get upset me when I tell them the truth, so, and I don't mean that in a negative way. Denville and the owner of that property owns that property, okay? We want to get involved, I spoke to the township engineer today, he said, but we have no jurisdiction, so whatever we come up with, we just have to hope that Denville and the owner of the property conforms, but they don't have to conform. So, I spoke to the engineer today, we're going to be meeting with regards to the properties over there, and, but, I don't know what the other solution would be, since we can't put stuff on somebody else's property, and that's the issue, and we can't put it on private property as well, but there's certain things we can't do, because if we start doing stuff like that, anybody that has property in town, they say, you know, you did it for one private property, why don't you do it for this private property? And that's the problem we have to deal with. What we need to have, and hopefully we can get to the table with the owners of the warehouse and with the township of Denville, is somehow they would agree that there's a solution, and like our business administrator said, right now, there is no solution with the owner of the property, which is the warehouse. So, that's what we have to, that's what we have to actually come to an agreement with first.
The last time we were here.
Sorry, ma'am, your time's up.
And believe me, if we can, we will, but we're not the owners of the property, and I know this firsthand, I dealt with it in Waterview, when Mountain Lakes came over screaming and yelling at me, when we were trying to get a project done here in Parsippany, and they kept asking me, what are you going to do for Mountain Lakes? And I was very candid with them, I'm not going to do nothing for Mountain Lakes, because this isn't Parsippany, that's what I have to deal with. I know the mayor in Denville, and he's a really good man, and I, hopefully, we can get somewhere with him, I just don't know, because we can't just tell him to do something if he doesn't even own the property. The property is owned by a company, and we just can't go in there and say, this is what we're going to do, because that's a violation of their rights, their land use rights as well. So, they were approved, they were approved, now, I wasn't the mayor at the time, I know your last meeting, you guys pretty much blamed me, but that's okay, it wasn't me whatsoever, and when the project was being done, it wasn't me either, because if I was the mayor then, I would have been a lot more involved. But that being said, I'm not throwing the previous mayor under the bus either, because same thing, it wasn't township property. So, even my predecessor had no control over that. So, what we're trying to do, like I said, we've been dealing with our township engineer, and the only reason why we can't move forward right now with any plans is because our DPW director, he retired, so the plans that were coming up, we would need him to approve, so we're going to be meeting with someone else in the DPW to look at these plans that we have, and whatever we have, we're going to present to the owner of the property and the landlord, to see if they'd be willing to work it out.
Thank you.
It's five of us.
I know, I saw the whole thing.
We can't have back and forth, so.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session.
Make a motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda. Be it resolved, the items listed in the NASTRI are considered routine and non-controversial by the township council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member still requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to the approval of minutes, could I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving along to presentations and reports. Mayor.
Thank you, Alcoa. I'll start this off with today, this month is cancer, National Cancer Prevention Month. And did you know that in 2025, it's estimated that nearly 40% of cancer cases can be prevented through lifestyle changes such as eating, as a nutritious diet, staying physically active and avoiding tobacco. Together, we can work towards a healthier and cancer-free community. And the reason why I'm reading this is today is the day my mother passed away of cancer. So, you know, I felt it would be very fitting. Over the next two months, the Parsippany Water Department and suburban consultant engineers will be teaming up to inspect outdoor meter pits at some homes in Lake Hiawatha and Lake Parsippany. This is part of our ongoing meter replacement program. Friendly field technicians from suburban consulting will be visiting properties in the area to take a look at the meter pits and gather some information. These pits are usually located in the front yards, driveways or the sidewalks. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to give the Parsippany Water Department a call at 973-263-7099. We appreciate your cooperation. On Friday, February 7th, I attended the Night to Shine Prom at Liquid Church, a special event sponsored by the Tim Tebow Foundation, hosted by local churches worldwide. Night to Shine is a complimentary prom experience dedicated to individuals with special needs. I was given the honor alongside Pastor Tim and Pastor Dave in welcoming a team of Parsippany police officers, New Jersey State Troopers, firefighters and emergency service members. Greeted guests as they arrived on the red carpet. The evening was filled with excitement and the attendees enjoyed professional hair makeup. It was really, really heartwarming and heartfelt. And I do this every year with Liquid Church and it's really a heartwarming experience. On Wednesday, February 12th, it was a really great time to, to go to Intervale School, elementary school for Career Day. I was joined by Parsippany Town Council Vice President Frank Neglia and we addressed the third, fourth and fifth graders. Students asked really good questions, what my role was as a mayor and what's the role of councilman. They asked Mr. Neglia that. The students asked some great questions and thoroughly enjoyed, and I, I really enjoy speaking with the students every year. Tonight I was going to speak with, with regards to our P L director, Nick Bronzino, but since he's not here, I'm going to save that for the next meeting. So that's really my report and any questions, you can meet right after the meeting. So also one more thing I did want to say. I have to say, our DPW, we had snow over the last two weeks, did a phenomenal job. And sometimes when people go on Facebook and say they didn't do their job, I'm going to come out and, I'm going to come out in favor and tell you wrong. They did do their job and they do it well every single, every event. I mean, they're out there through night and day. So when I have to read on Facebook, and I don't respond to Facebook, I wish the people would come here and have the guts instead of being keyboard warriors to come up and address us here. Because I'll address you back. Great job by our road department, by our sanitation department, by every department, parks and forestry for the commitment you make to the community of Parsippany. So thank you once again.
You know, Mayor, if I just may add, that storm we had about two weeks ago, there were a lot of towns in the county that their garbage was not picked up on that day and ours was. So I just want to add that, let everybody in our town know that our people were out there and a lot of the other towns did not get their garbage picked up on that day because of the storm.
Okay, township council?
Okay, I have something to talk about with the Parsippany Child Daycare Center. They received their Grow New Jersey three-star rating, which is great. It's, it gives them kudos when people and parents are looking for early education for their, for their kids. And they also received an economic development grant for $200,000 to put in a sprinkler system which will give them more flexibility for where they put their infants and toddlers and, it's an old building, it's a huge building, so this is, it's good for them. And they're also looking for part-time help. So if you know anybody in early childcare that's looking for work, contact the Parsippany Child Daycare or me. Thanks. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else from township council? Okay, moving along to township attorney.
Can I just add one more thing? I'm sorry, council president. Because Judy, being the environmentalist, when you talk, you spark my mind. I want to give kudos to several mayors, Ace Gallagher, Mark Hill, Joe Panola, with regards to the Whippenny River cleanup that they just did. We've got a grant from Congress, Congressman worked diligently for our towns to get us this grant. And this is just the first. Hopefully we can get this for the Rockaway River. And I even said at the meeting, even though this really doesn't really affect Parsippany, I felt that supporting this cause was, was a good thing because when we need support, I know those mayors will be there for our township. So, and it was pretty neat when, when they started cleaning it up. I went there, the river wasn't even moving, to now it's flowing. And I got to give kudos to Ace Gallagher who started this whole thing and I do thank the congressman as well.
Thanks.
Township attorney?
No report this evening, council president. Business administrator?
Thank you, thank you, council president, Mayor. Echo what Mayor said about the public workers, they did a great job and really the snow was probably the easiest part of it. The ice was even worse and then the absolute bitter cold makes it almost unbearable. People like me who hate being out cold for more than a minute and a half, I really appreciate it more so when I, and you guys are out there all day, so thank you very much. Port of a housing update, we had our deadline on the 15th to certify our trust fund numbers. That's been hit as well. We did that, so we're in good shape there. We're complying with all of the regulations that are put forth that we're supposed to do. Now as far as at the January meeting when we adopted our numbers, the deadline for interested parties to challenge those numbers is February 28th. And there's talk that fair share housing may just do a blanket objection to anybody who changed the numbers from the DCA numbers. But we, you know, our council and planner feel confident that we're in pretty good, you know, we've good backup too for the reasons why we did what we did. So we're in good shape there. Two ordinances are on the agenda. First, 160 on Lackawanna Avenue, it's Creek Partners who we've talked about before. There's been substantial vacancies for the past two years in this building. It was previously occupied by a single tenant, New York Life Insurance, went through a foreclosure back in 2016. Last year there was 86% occupancy or 86, 86% vacancy and last year there was 90%. So 23, sorry, 23 was 86, 24, 90, and we are where we are right now. It's an incredible opportunity and for this development and for this developer, Creek Partners has received some awards from Morris County Economic Development Corporation for another project that they own, 100 Lackawanna Avenue, they've owned it since 1985 here in Parsipony. So they're not a fly-by-night company, they're not a fly-by-night organization. They've been around, they're committed and the award they won from the Morris County Economic Development Corporation was a Business Attraction Award. So they're here to make sure that they're good partners with the township. So it's something that I hope that you take the planning board's recommendation and consider. The cannabis zoning introduction is up for your consideration as well. Again, it's just the introduction. In short, the ordinance allows cannabis businesses in very specific areas with detailed and strict rules and regulations regarding location, size, visibility, signage and licensing. And the rules are especially tight for retail dispensaries. All the information is in the ordinance at the next meeting when you make your final decision on it. We'll have a map ready for you and a, a nice clear, concise breakdown and with the possibility of either our cannabis attorney or our planner to come and discuss everything that went into it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no report. Moving along to ordinances. First reading ordinance, 2025-01, an ordinance to the township council of the township Parsipony Troy Hills adopting the 161 Lackawanna Avenue, Block 136, Lot 33 redevelopment plan. Be it resolved at the above ordinance being introduced right by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township Parsipony Troy Hills held on February 18th, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved at the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia.
Mr., can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of Mr. Wavery. Did he wait?
No, I'm here.
Hi.
A lot of people wish I would, but I'm still here.
We're voting, I know this is first reading, I'm voting on it. There's some wording in there, not to get everybody crazy, that says there might be an opportunity to, that they might ask for a pilot. If we're voting on this redevelopment plan, that would be a separate vote.
That's a separate vote, yes. They can, they can ask all they want, it's ultimately up to the council whether or not, yep, you're, you're correct.
I just want to know. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance to the township council of the township Parsipony Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending chapter 430 zoning of the code of the township Parsipony Troy Hills. Be it resolved at the above ordinance being introduced right by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township Parsipony Troy Hills held on February 18th, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given the opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved at the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Now please have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to non-consent agenda. R2025-060, authorizing change order number four for the well, 21R Replacement Well and Treatment Facility Improvement Project. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R2025-061, authorizing change order number nine for the well number AR, well number one, AR Replacement Well and Treatment Facility Improvements Project. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez.[1714.73]